Zoning permit fees and adjustments, wooded lots. Maintenance code. Man, we got Rob Martin here. I heard he runs the city. It is 10:31. We will call this meeting of the City of Findlay Planning and Zoning Committee to order. My name is Grant Russell. Mr. Baumann contacted me earlier today. He is under the weather, so I am taking the lead in running this meeting. Also, Denny Hellman has informed us previously that he had conflicts with today's meeting and would not be in attendance. For those listening and in the audience, so you know, farm animals is not on our agenda today and therefore will not be discussed. And we have a full agenda and a tight time limit, therefore, and I do not expect that we will have any substantive discussion about the maintenance code due to the other items on the agenda. And with that, we'll start with three items that City Planning Commission looked at this morning, all which were approved unanimously, five zero. And it's the three pieces of legislation currently working through, changes to the zoning code currently working its way through council. That would be donation bins, the length of discussion, construction rules, and conditional use changes. And we'll start with donation bins. Take it away, Jake or Mr. Cordanyer.
Grant, do we need a motion to excuse Dennis and Brian?
We have, we can. Motion to excuse.
Make a motion to excuse.
I'll second.
And all those in favor of excusing Dennis and Brian, please say aye.
Aye.
And they are excused. Now we'll roll on to...
Okay. So, the first item, ZA-09-2025, submitted by the City of Findlay to add section 1161.16. This is the donation bins to the City of Findlay zoning code to create clear rules for growing number of clothing donation bins. So, the language, Matt provided the summary in his letter to council. This creates clear rules for the growing number of clothing donation bins placed in parking lots. Permit and authorization. Bin operator must obtain a city permit and written consent from the property owner. Placement bins limited to the side or rear of buildings and must meet setback visibility standards. Operation and upkeep, identification, contact info, and regular servicing required. Violations subject to removal and local exemptions. Churches and local charities may place bins on their own property under simplified rules. And that last one caused the most discussion in the meeting, which led to...
Although...
Oh, okay. So anyways, yeah, as Grant stated, it was recommended to approve with a few edits, which Matt will go over.
So I ran upstairs and made the proposed changes that Planning Commission had recommended, and I am locked out of my computer, so I can describe those changes.
I could read them to you specifically. There was one part in, if you have, you guys have the document in front of you?
I don't.
If not, okay. There was about, something about donation bins shall be emptied regularly and within 48 hours of the primary contract person being notified by a city official. And that 48-hour time limit was changed to two business days, to take into account three or day weekend possibilities. The second one was in the exemption for organizations like Salvation Army or Goodwill. We had a three-part test previously about when, about what constituted those types of organizations. And the three-part test was that the donation bin is owned by a religious or charitable organization, that the donation bin is used exclusively to serve the purposes of that organization, and that the donation bin is located on the property that is owned or leased by that organization. And so the discussion in City Planning was concerning the second item that talked about intent of the donation bin, that the donation bin is used exclusively to serve the purposes of that organization. City Planning was concerned with that statement. And they recommended the removal of that item, and then the change, a small change to the wording of the first item. So, their recommendation now reads, the donation bin is owned by the religious organization, religious or charitable organization, and that the donation bin is located on the property that is owned or leased by that organization. In other words, nothing about intent, just that the goodwill owns the donation bin, and it's on the good, like on Goodwill's property. And that, after you have that, what they do with what they collect is, it all serves the mission of the goodwill, and we don't particularly want to get into the details of if they're collecting aluminum and then selling the aluminum to fund buying coats or collecting coats and giving it to coats for Christmas. To us, it's, and that was the recommendation after some good discussion.
Okay. I'm good with that.
And other than that, they were supportive of the intent of the, of the, or of the proposal. Did I, would you agree that that was a...
No, that's, I do have the changes in front of me. Thank you, Grant. I just, I wasn't able to show them on the screen.
Where are we at?
But, but yes, you summarized perfectly the, essentially, two changes that they recommended.
Over here, okay.
These are the three changes.
Any other, anything else from that side of the aisle?
No, I mean, I think you all are familiar with this.
Yes.
Discussion. Personally, I think they, that the change, I like it simpler is better.
Yeah.
I thought they, the points they made were, was, and the concerns they raised were very good. I think it's better now. I would recommend, recommend that council's approval of the zoning amendments for this as presented with the changes from City Planning.
I'll second that.
Let me actually write that down. We recommend... So specifically, as I wrote it, we recommend approval of the legislation with City Planning Commission recommended changes. Motion by Russell, second by DeArment, discussion. Seeing as though there's none, all in favor of that recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, and it is a go. Next on the agenda was, what was next on the agenda? Length of construction rules.
Oh, you want to do that first, or do you want to do the conditional uses?
Length of construction rules.
Okay. All right, so that's ZA-11-2025, which was third in our packet. So it was submitted by the City of Findlay to add section 1329, time limits for construction activity to the City Findlay Building Code to establish clear framework to address stalled or incomplete projects. So again, establishes a framework to address stalled and incomplete projects so that how built structures don't linger, completion timeline, sets a reasonable maximum duration to reach substantial completion, and provide, with administrative extensions for good cause, and enforcement rules, which includes suspension or revocation, revocation of permits, performance guarantees, and abatement if necessary. So, I put, I put the edits in, on your page, so you'll find those in 1329.03, construction time limits. Construction shall be completed within 12 months of the date of permit issuance or the date of the footer inspection, whichever is later. And same thing for multifamily, commercial, or industrial. Construction shall be completed within 24 months of the date of permit issuance or the footer inspection, whichever is later.
The purpose for this, and it was brought up by Planning Commission, I thought it was a good, good idea, in that some people, some projects pull a zoning permit, but they may not be able to mobilize or start construction for, you know, four months, six months, seven months, from the date of the zoning permit. But the footer inspection occurs, is a good, at the very beginning of construction, so that, that helps give them the full 12 months, 24 months, et cetera, from the date of the footer inspection.
That footer is so driven by weather, right? So, it takes that element out, so I like that.
Well, and, just a side note, the footer inspection is not, is not an inspection of the integrity of the footer. Essentially, the footer inspection, you go out and they're going to tell you where they're putting the footer, and then zoning is looking to make sure it meets setbacks. But...
Oh, so the footer inspection is before they actually pour concrete, for example? It's not after the, after concrete's poured?
Yeah, it's after they dig and they get all the rebar and everything in place prior to pouring concrete.
Okay, so it's in the middle, okay.
Do you check after it's done?
Yeah, we have follow-up inspections throughout the build.
So I think that just gives them a, gives, gives the person or entity more time for the actual construction and not just the date that they pulled the permit. But we made it whichever's latter because sometimes people forego the, or do not get a zoning or a footing inspection.
Well, this actually gives them incentive to get the footer inspection.
Yes.
Because they get, they get more, more time. There was also some discussion that I thought was interesting about substantially completed, and that that also presented an opportunity to, presented another opportunity for zoning to approve or give an inspection point or an approval. And I'm having a hard time trying to recreate City Planning's discussion on it, other than the fact that it was, it was too substantive of a change to the theory of what we're looking at right now for them to want to consider, consider it in this, in this first, or in this process. And they kind of punted it down the, down the road to say, if we think that that's, that's something worth doing, we can look at it in the future. I don't know if you wanted to...
Yeah. My viewpoint on it is...
Can you first explain what, what City Planning was considering in that?
I was not fully understanding, but what came to my mind is, if the roof is not installed, is the building finished? I think most of us would say no. Like if the shingles aren't on, is the building finished? I would say no. But I think, so in my mind, I wanted to ask the law director, do you think we need to put criteria that explains when a building is finished or substantially completed? So, I'm going to have a conversation with the law director and say, do you think we need criteria that defines what a finished building is? I don't know if that was the intent of the comments at Planning Commission, but that's where I took that.
Mr. Martin?
Sorry. There were a couple of different angles of the conversation, but to Matt's point, getting definitions and input from the law director to help guide where that will end up, but not to hold up this language to move forward, the recommendation would be to address this with the maintenance code down the road, if that is a part of a conversation in the future, or if, with the result of the conversation with the law director is, we can amend this in the future, but not to hold this up as it is written.
All right.
And, and just a note, almost more for public information, but this applies to projects that require a permit. So if you're painting your house, you are not subject to this, because painting your house obviously does not require a permit. So, I just wanted to clarify that. It's for projects that require a permit.
Okay.
Other, any other questions? So I'll put a motion out there so that we can have discussion. I would recommend we, approval of the legislation with the City Planning Commission recommended changes, which remarkably sounds like our last recommendation. That is, that is my motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Russell, second by Niemeyer, discussion. One, one point I wanted to bring up is that I think that we'll all support this legislation, or this recommendation. I think this makes, makes for a real interesting situation. You have two properties side by side. One is a, requires a permit and is covered by this legislation. And it is, it has a requirement to be completed, whereas the property next to it could have the exact same condition and have no such requirements. And this was kind of brought up in City Planning, and that's, that there, there and the second property would, is, would be covered by a maintenance code if one were such, if one was created. But I think it makes, it makes an interesting dichotomy between a new construction, a project that requires a permit and one that doesn't. And I don't think that was lost on City Planning, but the other, other point is that this is not retroactive. So any construction that is currently in process or has been permitted but is not complete is not covered under, is not, will not be affected by this legislation. It's only from the point of adoption going forward.
So that doesn't help us on our Sandusky issue?
No, and Grant's example, so you don't need a permit to recite your house. But we have folks who have started reciting, and 20 years later, they have not finished reciting the property. And that's kind of where the maintenance code discussion came in.
Yeah.
Because the length of construction does not address that, but the maintenance code says that you have to have all four sides of your house.
Sure.
Sealed and weathered.
Yeah.
So, so I think that's kind of how, you know, we started with the length of construction, found that it would only address three quarters of the issues, and the other quarter of the issues would be addressed. That's kind of the progression.
Other discussion. With the motion to approve, approval of the legisla, we recommend approval of the legislation with City Planning Commission recommended changes. All those in favor of that recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, and it is approved. Let's roll on to the conditional use changes.
Okay, so this was number two in the packet, ZA-10-2025, to change certain conditional uses in the Findlay zoning code. So this, these changes move certain high-impact uses from a permitted use to a conditional use to allow case-by-case review and impose site-specific conditions. In the C2 district, fueling stations, oil change facilities, small box retail stores would move into the conditional use section. And then in the I1 district, self-storage facilities would be moved to the conditional use as well. There was very little discussion on that one, and they voted to approve.
I wouldn't say there was very little, but there was discussion and no recommended changes, and they approved it as it is.
Other questions? And the one is that, there, back, talk about the definition of small box retail.
Yeah. We don't have a definition of a small box retail. I did not have a chance to put it on, on this paper, but the final legislation will have the definition, and the definition, it's a definition that a lot of communities use. It's based upon square footage, how it operates, and it also excludes, you know, pharmacies and different type of small businesses. The definition of small box retail is really aimed at dollar stores, dollar store, not the brand name Dollar Store, but Dollar Stores is the group.
I get it, yeah, sure.
Does, does that definition have a traffic count?
It does not.
Does not? And if, if a dollar store had a pharmacy, would it be excluded?
I don't know. But it's a conditional use, so that would be considered by Planning Commission.
Okay. Other questions for this august body on the other side? Anybody in a motioning mood, so we can go on to discussion?
So I'll make a motion to, well, let's see, so we're recommending to council to adopt this, these changes to...
As presented?
As presented to the zoning code.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. And the way I heard it, we recommend approval of the legislation as presented. Discussion. I still remain concerned on the conditional use on some of these, but I am obviously in the minority on that. I will recommend approval, even though I think on the, on the gas station for one is, is interesting at best. Real quick, conditional use has required, there's, there's court-defined reasons why a conditional use can be denied, correct?
There are, the Ohio Supreme Court has outlined five criteria for review of conditional uses.
In your, in your tenure on the, in this, in these, in your career, have you encountered a lot of times where a conditional use has been denied?
No. No. Generally, generally, the Planning Commission recommends conditions when the project moves forward.
I just like the ability to put conditions.
And it's, you can put conditions on a permitted use also, but legally, legally, the, it gives the city more leeway on the conditions and on saying no.
Okay. Other discussion. All those in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
Okay, I'm sorry. All those in favor of the recommend, I thought you had a point you wanted. All those in favor of the recommendation, approval of the legislation as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign, it is adopted. Next up, Mr. Atkins on zoning permit and fee adjustments.
So, let's start the conversation. We took the recommendations and feedback from you from the last meeting and made some adjustments accordingly. I know one of the biggest reasons we were looking at this was because it is a revenue-producing department, and we're making, looking at trying to create some more coverage of the operating budget. These fees hadn't been changed in so long, and again, just a little history on that, that we started looking at it and we needed to increase the ability to cover some of the operating budget. So, we took your feedback, Councilman Niemeyer, last time, as we brought the original proposal, which was modest, but it was moving in the right direction, because, you know, if we wanted to cover the complete operating budget, we'd have to essentially increase the fees to bring in over $300,000 of revenue. And that's just, with the amount of fees or permits that we issue, that's just not realistic. So, but Councilman Niemeyer, when we brought the original proposal, was like, listen, we've kicked the can down the road enough times, let's, let's try to make this a more substantial increase to accomplish what you're trying to. So, Eric and I sat down again, evaluated where we were to other permitting or governing, permitting groups in the area, and the proposed in front of you gave, they have, the proposed in front of you, and you believe it was provided to you earlier before today, essentially is, it's doubling the current fee structure, and that still is very reasonable to other people that are providing permits in the area. I think that's important to note, that we want to be user-friendly with people that are trying to conduct business and do, follow the rules and be permitted appropriately. So we feel that even with this, people look at the percentage and say, oh my gosh, it's, you know, you're doubling things, it's so forth. It's still very reasonable compared to other individuals or other permitting bodies. Now what that does, though, to the bottom line, if you take the three-year average, because that gives us the clearest look at this, it, we would be able to cover the operating budget, or 33% of the operating budget, is that's what that essentially comes down to. If we then take the 2025 year-to-date numbers of permits issued with the new proposed fee schedule, it would actually cover almost 40% of the operating budget if the, the permit, the permits issued in 2025 were annualized out, and that would be the number that we would continue to see. So, but again, there's some variation in what's issued and so forth. So, and we always like to throw that long ball out there to say, well, what would it look like? So we tripled, just as an example, to show you what it would look like, the far, far column on the example sheet that we gave you.
See, I didn't get, I mean, I had...
That's, that's it.
This is the last one.
Yes.
This is what I couldn't print this morning.
That's what I couldn't print, okay.
And this is the one you didn't give me. That was the most important one.
I'm sorry.
I didn't care about the other one. I cared about this one.
Yeah. So the...
All right, so, okay, so...
That's what I'm referencing, what I'm talking to. That's what I'm referencing, what I'm talking to.
Walk me through the numbers now, so.
Okay, so the current, the first column on the left next to identified permits are your current pricing, your fee structure.
So it generates fifty-nine thousand?
Correct. That's, that's current.
Yep, current.
And that's about twenty percent, covering twenty percent of the operating budget.
Okay.
And then trying to look at, there's some variability. If you go back three years and one year was higher, lower, you know, you try to identify that. So we took a three-year average, the next column, and that's, then we use the proposed fee structure, the fee schedule, and then we're generating just under a hundred thousand dollars.
A hundred grand. So we were going from ninety grand to a hundred grand.
Sixty to a hundred.
I'm sorry, sixty to a hundred, yeah, okay.
If, if we take the three-year average, then I wanted to see based on what twenty twenty-five is. So you jump over to the second from the right, should have numbered those, sorry. But the second from the right column is actually the proposed with twenty twenty-five annualized.
Okay.
And that's where you can see that, I'm sorry, it's, no.
Yeah.
I annualized it and it essentially is covering almost forty percent. That, that is, those are true numbers. The actual year-to-date is, I'm looking, no, I'm confusing myself.
No, the columns three and four are year-to-date using current numbers and proposed numbers.
Yes, thank you. So it's sixty-four thousand and change would be the revenue year-to-date based on proposed. Now, if you annualize that number out, it's a little, it's like a hundred and twelve thousand and then that's covering almost forty percent of the operating budget. Just to show you based on true numbers of twenty twenty-five.
Alright, so we're somewhere between thirty-three and forty percent of.
Correct.
But we're going from twenty percent to thirty-three to forty.
Yes, based on permits issued, right?
And that's, and, and we did that by doubling and that only gets us?
Yes.
It seems like if we're doubling, we'd get the forty, but okay.
But again, it's issued. It's what's issued. So I think from where we were stagnant for so many years, I feel that this is.
You're gonna have to do this every year for.
Well, with every other fee structure in the city of Finley, as I've been having to evaluate how it's affecting the operating budgets, this, this was the one that was at turn and we will continue on an annual basis to look at operating expenses as well as where we need to move these numbers. Keeping in mind that we want to be service oriented and good stewards of having people conduct business in our community. So there's a balance. We had to move the needle to the conversation last meeting. We needed to be aggressive in this first move and I think if we continue to move, move it and adjust with the market, I feel that it won't be as drastic in the future and we'll continue to make progress.
Do most of these zoning departments stand alone, like pay for themselves? But is that, is that kind of the goal or?
That should always be the goal, um, but you don't see that at all pretty much throughout the state.
You don't see it?
No, you always see it being subsidized by the general budget.
Cause to, to fully cover the cost of things, you would have permits that are very expensive. And, and one thing to note, I know, and I don't know if this isn't, is in their numbers, but the planning commission numbers are probably way down this year. We average, over the last five or six years, uh, we've averaged twenty-five site plans a year. We're currently at eight site plans. So we've seen a, a real drop in the number of site plans this, in twenty twenty-five.
You know, I also think that there's a, a general benefit to the community to have construction activity happen. And, and therefore the community subsidizes the efforts of the, of this department through their, through our, through the general fund, through their income tax payments. Whereas if we tried to cover the entire cost of the department, um, on a user fee basis, you would see potentially less activity and also more activity that didn't go, that was done without going through the proper permitting chain, channels as, as necessary. So I don't, so while it might be a nice goal in theory, I don't think that the reality of it isn't, is there. But this is, this is a good step in the right direction. And one of the other things that we had asked them to do that they have, was to kind of make it, was to simplify a little bit. And like, when we're looking at the new construction, previously we had different rates for single-family versus two and three versus accessory versus for family business and commercial. And that has since been, um, thinned down to just having residential structures, accessory structures and, uh, for family business and commercial. So we've, we've, we've lessened the columns. I would be, I, I actually had a conversation with Eric about lessening the rows. And so if we could zoom in on this so we can just see one page.
It is a lot of rows.
There we go. So, so Eric and I had a discussion about what's, you know, why do we have a zero to one fifty, one fifty-one to six, six hundred, et cetera? Why don't you just have a zero to nine hundred, a nine, nine oh one to, you know, some, some number here that, um, that reflects his investment and time. Just to, just, just to simplify and, and we didn't decide anything. It just, it was just a little more of a philosophy discussion. And part of it is evidently our MUNIS system from Tyler Tech requires us to work in square, uh, in, in square foot increments versus zoning increments, because you could also say on the left-hand side, you'd, you would just say M one or R, R one, R two, R three, for example, but I, I'm interested now publicly to say that some of the, reflect on our discussion and, and where you think, if that's in the right direction and if, if so, how you would further refine.
Yeah, the, the one thing, looking at it as we were discussing other, um, items on this agenda. The, the discussion that we had with the R three are, you know, R one to R three, the single-family dwellings, typically you'll have them from nine hundred square feet to twenty-five hundred square feet is your typical house. So that could be a baseline of the, moving everything to twenty-five hundred structure at the front end. And then the bigger projects like the Sheetz distribution centers, the Campbell's distribution center, all the industrial stuff. Once you get to like the ten thousand mark, start doing bigger increments at that point to cover those items. Those items are always the ones that we're out there ten to fifteen times going through footers, making sure locations are different spots. Because they're seven hundred fifty thousand square foot buildings and they consume a lot of time. So that, that would be a change that I think that would make sense is keeping all the single-family dwellings, moving it up to twenty-five hundred and make it all two hundred dollars for any, pretty much any house unless you go bigger than that, twenty-five hundred, it might increase in the size and time and effort. And that, at that point, twenty-five hundred to five thousand, five thousand seventy-five hundred, seventy-five hundred to ten thousand and ten to twenty-five thousand or however you would suggest at that point. So the front end, four, four tiers, and then on the back end, however you would, as a city council would have liked to see it, we can make that adjustment.
I'd assume have you worked through it, Eric. I mean, I, I don't know that it's, that we need to get in the weeds with it. You're gonna have to implement it. I mean, whatever you think is, I like the idea of consolidating however you want to do it, but I mean, I'm just more interested in the overall funding the department and not in the weeds of.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's on you. I mean, whatever you want to do with that, but, but in general, I agree with what Grant's saying, consolidate that and fewer lines.
As a public servant, I would prefer to keep the costs for the citizens lower than what it would be for business and commercial coming in.
Correct.
So that's where I think that the, the nine oh one to twenty-five hundred makes sense. And then if we leave them however, we can adjust them to keep them, the same rates going down. Or we can make it every twenty-five hundred, just every doubled. It makes sense to me. It's gonna, I mean, it's just an input in the system and they'll calculate it, square footage and they'll generate the fee. So once it's approved, it's pretty simple.
And then the, the, from, from my perspective, the overall revenue, uh, effects are similar to what has been shown on the, on the spreadsheet with the, with the overall effect of getting to a, a third of budget coverage. So I don't, don't, wouldn't want the simplification to result in, uh, less total revenue, more or less. I do have some questions on the, um, on the spreadsheet, if we could go to that.
While Grant's looking at that, I'll just make one point in that, you know, Eric's department, a lot of time that they spend is enforcement. I mean, when you have enforcing some, you, you know, you're sending certified letters, you're researching the property, you're following up, you're doing this and that. I mean, it could be half of your man, man-hours are going towards enforcement and there's really, there's no revenue in enforcement or very little at all. So, um, you know, the, the permit costs are supposed to reflect the time spent on approving the permit. So if, if we were at one hundred percent, the permit cost would also be covering enforcement costs. And that's, I don't know if that's what we'd be looking for.
Right. Sounds like we need to increase our enforcement penalties.
So on, on, on this, if you could go to the left so we can see the col-.
Just kidding.
Go to the left. So go to the bottom and there's two penalties, penalty one and penalty two with no cost. Well, how do we do the penalties?
Uh, whatever the project is, so if it's new house they're building, it's triple the fee that it would be if they didn't get a permit prior to the start of construction. So if it was a two hundred dollar fee, it's six hundred dollars.
Okay.
And we'll catch probably, um, average eighteen of them here.
Rolling up, rolling up, uh, the sign fee for new. Just on the theory of you spend more time on a new sign than you do on a replacement, I was, I thought that the sign fee was low. Quite honestly. I would think the sign fee requires, a new sign requires a footer inspection, uh, calculations. Where a sign replacement or a face replacement is pretty much, you're not changing the box, you're just changing the face and it doesn't require the, the amount of time. So I was, I was, um, surprised at the small amount of the increase and the, uh, and the small amount of the overall. I thought that was, but.
Now, those are average numbers too. So the average permit fee was a hundred dollars at the time. Now, we've had some bigger signs that were a little bit more, but the red numbers on that spreadsheet are averages of total brought in divided by number of permits issued that generated.
Oh, so signs, signs are based on square?
Square footage as well. Yep. And your typical sign we'll probably have for a new build is a hundred square feet. On typical average, sometimes we'll have a two hundred square foot one. Very rarely will we see anything below fifty square feet because that's a very small sign.
My, my comments don't stand. I, I think that, I think you're very generous on new signs. And for the, and, and for that, the, the next to the sidewalk cafes, I think that is predominantly in downtown. I think that enhances our downtown. And I am a little concerned at the, uh, at the, it, it's a general theory is, is there's some activity in, in, um, the city that we want to encourage. And I think a robust downtown is one. I think a new residential building is another. And, and that, as you were stated before, you don't want to, you want to, uh, you don't want to make resi- you want to, don't want to make residential fees so onerous so that they, um, bless you, so that they, they stop or potentially hinder, hinder development. And so I, 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 I view downtown business in the, in the, in a similar, um, sense and, and would encourage that those, the sidewalk cafes be kept as, um, minimal as re- minimal as reasonably possible. How's that for a statement? I don't know what the other members think.
So on the sidewalk cafes currently, a, a new sidewalk cafe, I believe is, I can't quote it because we don't have too many, and the renewals are fifty dollars apiece.
Do you have the same amount of?
Moving it up to a hundred and twenty-five from fifty.
Do you have the same amount of effort with a renewal?
Uh, what we run into is multiple administrative stuff to where we ask for a site plan. They don't get it. We review the documents, we're calling them back and forth. And then after they get approval, what we run into is going out frequently, whenever there's a complaint for ADA complacency, measuring to make sure that there's a four-foot walkway. So there is time spent with enforcement. So they get back, it goes back to that enforcement fee. But it's also city property, so there's not a lease on the land either, uh, that they are using, but they are bringing business into the city. So it's a catch twenty-two.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question. Well, the sidewalk cafes, these, the permits, they get it once, but then they have to renew it every year.
Yeah, it's renewed yearly and we have to make sure that they have current liability coverage as well.
Is there a fee associated with, um, just take the sidewalk one. You go out and, and they have, uh, deviated from their, um, filed plan and there is an ADA issue or something. You go out there, you, you find it. Is there a fee associated for them to, to rectify?
Nope.
Should there be?
I don't think, I mean, most of the time whenever I'm out there, they fix the issues. A lot of times we have where they create their self-barriers and that usually creates the issue and they move it right away. So I don't get a lot of pushback. Um, so I don't think that they should have any kind of repercussion of fines. The repercussion is they lose it from the city and they can't do a sidewalk cafe if it continues to be an issue.
And that's not been a concern to date?
Not yet, nope. Not got one.
So your issues on this one, it's gone from two hundred to two fifty for the, the new sidewalk cafe?
I just wanted to make sure that we are not, um, too high on, on, on activity that, 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 that supports the city. You know, quite honestly, um, if a homeowner puts in a deck, so be it. But if we have somebody building a new residence, I think the city, I think the, the city has more, um, desire to see the new residence built than if some, than they care if, if a new deck is built. I think the city has, um, more to support a business that is gonna do, that's gonna do an addition sidewalk cafe. That's gonna generate more revenue, more business for them. And, and so that our, our fee should reflect that, what the city has a general interest in. Or that should be one of the, one of the inputs without saying, it should be this amount or that amount.
Right.
So are we, are we thinking that we need to go back and do one more round? We're gonna meet in just a few, just a few weeks. I think it would be October, if I can read a calendar right, October ninth. Is city planning, is that our next agenda? Would that, Rob and Eric, does that give you enough time? And if you want to send a, a draft by us or me or whoever, um, for input, that's always would be welcome and then present this in, in October and, because I think we're shooting, all these would start in the new year, correct? And we would do three readings. So October, you'd have third meeting, you'd have complete by the end of November, third meeting, second meeting in November, if we're on that timeline.
Yeah, that, that would be preferred because then I can associate these with the twenty-six budget.
Okay.
So. So.
Does that sound?
Yeah, that's good.
Good?
So going over the rest, so there's no more of the changes. Is there any, cause I'll just, like, uh, the, some other changes that we made are on red lettering. So with, we used to have a PU, a PMUD. Uh, Matt advised that it got changed to PUD. Uh, that fits our zoning code. The City Planning Commission, Matt and I worked through and we adjusted those fees accordingly to the zoning fees as well. And then, uh, there was a new, new City Planning Commission application fee for residential conditional use and for commercial conditional use. And then we also added per the fire, fire department, a fire inspection fee. Cause they weren't charging anything for City Planning Commission and Wood County inspections. The other things are cost of legal notices has substantially gone up. For board of zoning appeals especially, this is a city council issue, um, because it comes out of your budget. Uh, we moved that up $50 because any of my legal fees now for board of zoning appeals is upwards to 400, to 400 plus. Depending on how big the, uh, agenda is. And then same thing for alley vacations and street vacations and rezoning petitions. The cost of the legal notice has substantially increased for those as well. So they haven't been touched since 80s, 90s.
Where, where are all of those on?
So those are on page two of the document I gave you. The back page. That's,
Okay.
And they used to be $75 and that wasn't touched since a long time ago. But now the cost of things, that $75 doesn't even cost, uh, cover a fourth of the legal fee whenever a petition for alley vacation or street vacation comes through. Those are upwards to $400 as well, plus, depending on how big they are.
So you're saying it's 400, but we're only gonna charge 250, huh?
Yeah.
Well, there's a substantial benefit to anybody, you know, I don't, I think you could charge more. I don't know. If you're gonna abandon your alley, you're gaining a lot, right? I mean.
If you guys want to adjust that, I will. Uh, I think that was a fair number just to start at and then revisit it.
Cause what, what is it currently?
$75.
75.
Yeah, for both of those.
75 to 250. Oh, and the zoning petition is also 75, you're saying?
Yep. And then with rezoning petitions, you get a lot of time and effort from Matt's group, uh, with signage and communications and.
You're shy, you're shy about charging people, aren't you? I guess over the years, man. I don't know. I mean, you work for a corporation, they're pushing revenue. I mean, it was just, you know, it was always uncomfortable, but it was just, you know. I would push it, Matt. That's what I would do, but Eric, but.
But I, I agree. But coming from this perspective, trying to find that balance. Where you, to Councilman Russell's point about, you know, where's that fee scheduled for this versus what they're paying in their taxes and, you know, try, trying to be good stewards and it, yeah, if you have a margin you're trying to keep, right, then this, that's a different conversation. And now you come from corporate, that's easy. But it's a different viewpoint, different perspective when it comes to government. And we're, we're just trying to move the needle. And this is the first effort here. So.
I'll defer then. I guess I'd.
Does, uh, is there a, in a, uh, oh, when you bring a piece of property into, into, uh, Mad County.
Annexation.
Annexation. Is there, is there a fee that you charge with annexations?
So, so I talked to, uh, Denise about that, to look up a history of it. And, um, the application fees are very little that I've ever, ever paid. Um, because the starting point is with the county level. And we get the backend of it. But there are recording fees, once it is annexed into the city, that the city does cover.
Because it's interesting that we do a re-, we do a rezone of it, or an initial zoning, I should say.
And, and it wa-, and it was on the fee schedule, but it was something that was never generated from what we could tell from the history of things. So it made sense to just get, remove it from the fee schedule.
Real quick, back to sidewalk cafes. Is there, there's gotta be restrictions? So, so many square foot or so many chairs?
So it's, so we look at a, a site plan. And so the restrictions are it has to be four, there has to be a four-foot walkway for ADA complacency from the back end of the sidewalk, I mean, back end of the curb to wherever the structure begins. And then they have their, their storefront is the area that they can use, the, the width of it. Um, there's, as long as they can fit, like Logan's, for example, they can fit three tables in front of their storefront. That's what they get approved for. There's no restrictions on how many seating you can have. It's, you have that size to try to fit as much seating as you can. I'm sure that there might be some, you don't want to have everybody cramped. So it's typically three to four seatings outside of all these sidewalk cafes typically. But the biggest one is the, the walkway aisle is the biggest thing that you deal with all the time.
Well, and back to the, to the alley vacation and rezone, I'd, I'd echo their comments, um, that you don't have to be shy on, on the fees, but I understand the, the desire to reach the balance. I think on this, on this item that what we are saying to Eric and Rob is to, uh, continue to refine the fees and the structure, um, and bring it back on, on, at our next meeting, October 9th hopefully. And we'll go from there.
Thank you for the input.
Jacob, you wanna, let's move to wooded lots.
So we have 15 minutes. What, what, what else do we need to cover before I, just the wooded lots?
Witted, wooded lots.
Okay.
Just, uh, we only briefly touched it, touched on it. It's always easier when people are watching you.
Because I'm locked out of my computer, I don't have access to it. I, I remember last time you looked at it and wanted some time to digest. So are there any?
I'm trying to deci-, I'm trying to remember what we discussed. I mean, I think you, you presented a concept of that a wooded lot was somehow, uh, it's almost like a riparian quarter that's been developed and somehow it was, uh, allowed. But I, I've never seen documentation on, on legislation or anything that really, really described what, what was being proposed.
We do have a document. So the, the, the difficulty from the city standpoint is essentially there's no relief from the high grass standard. There are situations, there are places where property owners want to go from a lawn to a natural,
Right.
a natural area.
Right.
There's nothing in the code that allows them to do that. And so this is, in, in some ways it's providing relief. It's giving, it's outlining circumstances where you can go from a mowed yard to a natural, you know, grass going six, seven feet tall and eventually trees and eventually a woods.
Have you made changes since the last time we talked?
I have not.
Okay. We, did we recommend changes?
No, no, we were, we, it was the first time we had.
It was, it was the first time that you had seen it.
I, I don't believe I've seen the actual legislation or any, any. If, if you sent it, I can't find it.
Okay.
Might just send it again and we'll just take it up on the 9th.
Okay.
I think, I, I don't really have any comments at this point. I mean.
It really helps us with the situation. Like we understand what you're trying to do. The code doesn't really allow it.
Yeah.
And we as administrators don't have the, you know, we have some leeway, but we can't just say ignore that rule.
Yeah.
You know, the other, the only way you could do that right now would be to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, outline your plan and request the variance from the grass ordinance.
I'm on board. I'm, I like the concept. I mean, you just gotta figure it out, you know.
And one last item, um, an email was sent by Lisa Miller, um, to, uh, I don't actually understand where the, the, you know, the whole direction of this. I think it was originally sent to zoning to Eric and then it got to Denise. But it's, uh, also been sent to all of city council concerning the, um, farmyard animals. Um, there's not an item on our agenda to discuss it. And the letter will be on council's, uh, full agenda for the first meeting in October. I just refer that the, uh, confirm that the letter was, uh, received or the email was received. And, uh, you can read it at your leisure. And with that, I don't believe we have any other, there's not time to get to the maintenance code in any substantive manner. And so with that, I would.
Can, can I provide a quick update on the maintenance code?
Please.
So, uh, the law director had received a letter, uh, with several concerns from the rental association. And so he is doing some, he is, he's doing some legal background search. I know he has an intern working on it today.
Okay.
So he, he's just kind of coming up with some responses to that. And then I met with Dandy Arment and there's some changes there. And, and there's a couple, there's probably a quarter of the comments. My answer was let's ask the law director.
Okay.
So, uh, and he's reviewing those.
Okay.
So that, that's where we're at with the maintenance code.
When I read that letter from the apartment association, I was very interested because they were saying, we already have laws for these. And I was, so I'm glad we're, I'm glad Rob is pursuing a response. That's important. Yeah.
We, we have adopted the state of Ohio Building Code.
Okay.
But my research, and I conveyed this to Rob, is that the building code is very meticulous on when you're building a new structure and it's very light maintenance. So of, of the 62 communities that I found that adopted what we're proposing, international maintenance code, almost all of them had adopted the building code and adopted the maintenance.
Okay.
Because the two together represent a complete, complete set of guidelines and enforceability. So, but Rob's looking into that.
Okay.
He's also looking at case law, looking at. So he will come back and give us some good information about that.
Great.
And with no other business, a motion to adjourn.
So move?
All in favor of the permit, please say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thanks, guys.
Yep.
Take care of us.
Thank you. Did you walk down or?
I, I.
All right, I'm gonna head out.
Oh, I'm on watering duty. Did you get it this morning?
Yeah, I did. So.
Let's say.